Good afternoon and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council, City Council Post Agenda Meeting for Tuesday, February 8th, 2022. We are so glad to have with us today students from the Pittsburgh Public Schools and from Ellis School who have come to show a project they worked on. They were given the very important task of, for the first time in history, not just having students show up and give their opinions, but actually give them the power, legislative power, to fund programming. And so what I've done is that the money that I usually would give out to three-based organizations, we let the children, the young people, decide where those funds should go. And so I think it's a great, great idea, and I'm going to advocate for other members to do the same. And so we're going to turn it to OMB. You introduce yourself and introduce our guests.
Sure, absolutely. I'm David Hutchinson. I'm the Assistant Director for Capital and Asset Management in the Mayor's Office of Management and Budget. Part of my purview includes the Community Development Team, working closely with Councilmember Wilson on ways in which we can utilize Community Development Block Grant Funds from HUD to help improve the lives of low-income residents throughout the city of Pittsburgh. So when Councilmember Burgess approached us about wanting to do something new for the 2020 and 2021 Public Service Grants for District 9, I was really excited, thought back about District 5 and prior interactions. Dylan's been at the table before with Pittsburgh Public Schools and specifically the Student and Government Council to figure out how to leverage the passion of students within the city to get more of a community voice in the process. So I'm really excited to work with both this group of students and also staff from PPS. Thank you to Annie and to Lanell, they've been instrumental in the process. Students, would you like to go around and give your name and neighborhood for the record?
Yes, so hi, my name is Arhan Bajadia. I'm a senior at Obama Academy.
Yeah, I'm Ada Perelman. I'm also a senior at Ellis, and I live in Squirrel Hill.
Hello, my name is Neela McAlfresch. I'm a senior at Kappa, and I live in Morningside.
Hello, I'm Isaiah Trumbull. I live in Highland Park, and I'm a sophomore at Obama.
My name is Dylan Shapiro. I live in Squirrel Hill, and I'm a senior at Obama.
The students are going to be running most of the show today and giving a presentation on what they did. I'm going to pass to them very soon. But I do want to point out that there's no training wheels with this program. They saw the exact same data that the council members see whenever our office meets with you to explain demographics, to talk about food insecurity, to talk about different racial components within the communities to figure out how to best reach our most vulnerable residents. They got to see all of that. They got to do a really nice outreach campaign to get survey data from community members within the PPS community. They got to go through all the trials and tribulations of figuring out how to market something, how to make something impactful and digestible to resident, enough so that they want to participate, and they got some great participation. So I'm really excited with the work that they've done and the recommendations that they've made. So now I'd like to pass it to the PPS students.
Yeah, so we're just gonna go through our slides and kind of how we went about this process. So we're the Students and Government Council, and today we wanted to talk to you about our District 9 Community Development Budget Grant. So just a little bit of background on what the Students of Government Council is. So we're a group of 30 representatives from all around Pittsburgh. We have students from public schools, private schools, parochial schools, charter schools, et cetera. And we're all just really passionate about making changes in our community, and we meet with a lot of different local politicians and state politicians, and we're led by Ms. Lanell Reed, who's sitting over there, and she is the Student Voice Project Manager. And then we also have three senior advisors, so myself, Ada, Arhan, and Dylan. And we are also joined today by Neela and Isaiah, who are also serving on the council.
Throughout the pandemic, we've been engaged with the Office of the Budget and other stakeholders to, you know, really make sure that we're making informed decisions when it comes to the money that Reverend Burgess has given us the opportunity to allocate. We've evaluated CDBG proposals from across District 9 and sort of identified which ones we felt would be, address the needs that we identified through a number of sources that we'll talk about a little bit more later, and also that do so in the most, you know, reasonable and cost-effective and consistent manner.
So just to give some, a little bit more background on the District 9 Public Service Grants. So the city government started out with 113 proposals, and we, as the Students and Governments Council, worked to narrow down these proposals to the eventual awardees by first conducting a survey and then scoring all of these proposals that we've seen based on the survey and the needs that were highlighted in that survey. And eventually, we came down to the awardees, and I'll hand it off to Ada to speak a little bit more about that process.
Actually, I'm going to talk first, and then to Ada. But yeah, so we sent out a survey, and we were very clear in making sure that the survey was just targeted at District 9 residents. We felt that, you know, this community is really important to focus on, as, you know, we know this is a place that has been targeted by gentrification and other similarly rooted issues. And so we wanted to ensure that these voices were the ones that were being elevated. In particular, we focused on a younger demographic. So students from Pittsburgh Westinghouse and other magnet schools, we really tried to target because we wanted to make sure that our survey was collecting a diverse range of perspective. And so we used a variety of marketing tools ourselves, for one, because we could talk to our classmates and to our peers. But we wanted to make sure that we weren't limiting ourselves just to a convenient sample. And so we also use social media, and that helped to really leverage our survey, especially with that younger demographic, because so many people are on social media platforms. So we were able to gather quite a few responses from that.
After all this great work that we did getting the survey out to the world and to PPS students, we saw a lot of responses. We saw a lot of responses from D9 neighborhoods, which we appreciated. It really reflected how we got out the survey to Westinghouse students in particular. And we saw the data trended towards four key services. They were health services, mental health services, food banks and pantries, and homelessness services. And we really saw through this data that kids cared the most about these really core, basic assets of our society. So we blew up this picture here to show which neighborhoods students responded from. You can see a lot of D9 neighborhoods there. You can really see our focus on Westinghouse reflecting the data, showing how many students were coming from that school and responding to our survey. And here you can see the survey data in full with the most important categories the students selected. You can see the four core services really miles ahead of the competition, really taking the lead and showing how important that is to our students.
Yeah, so after we sent out the survey and got the results from the students, this team at the city made a rubric for us to score each of the proposals that we had for the grant. So each of the 30 members on the council was able to fill out this rubric, and you can see there are a bunch of different categories we had while we were scoring. So, for example, one of the categories was how much is this grant proposal going to serve specifically residents in District 9? So some of the organizations were not necessarily serving residents in District 9, and we wanted to make sure that, you know, this money was going to directly benefit these residents. And also, we wanted to make sure that the goal of the proposal was aligning with the needs that we had gotten from the survey, kind of what Isaiah was talking about. And if you can see on the right, we have an example of one of the categories and how we scored it. So you can see it just goes from zero to five, and that's for the service to District 9 category. And another thing we looked at while we were scoring was sort of, we wanted to make sure that these were benefiting the District 9 residents directly and not just, you know, Pittsburghers in general. And we wanted to make sure, even though each organization was really great, we wanted to make sure that we were giving the money to the people that needed it most.
Yeah, and what was really great about this rubric is that it allowed us to remain unbiased. So here you can see a normal distribution of all of the scoring that we did, and the data is unimodal, and it was able to remain skewed left while also being unbiased, which was great, because we could give points to organizations that we thought that we liked, that we thought looked credible, and that would really benefit these communities the most, while also ensuring that we were scoring everything objectively. So I think this graph is just a good summary of the work we did.
All right, so now we get the fun part, who got the money? So as you can see there, there are a number of different organizations, and they all do, you know, vastly different types of work. We have, you know, organizations that provide resources to LGBTQ+ people. We have organizations that, you know, provide help to seniors, that provide, you know, food bank services. And so really what we were able to do was identify a group of organizations that were really targeted towards what we saw the community needs being. So, you know, Prasad Center, that was the LGBTQ+ organization I was talking about, they do a lot of stuff regarding mental health, especially when it comes to young people. That's really important, and that's also exactly what we saw, you know, in our survey. And so we were really able to fund projects, you know, based off of that data that we received, so that we could make informed decisions about, you know, what are the needs of residents of District 9, and not just sort of, you know, making educated guesses about that, having districts, having residents of District 9 say explicitly, this is what we need, and then being able to deliver on that.
And we had a lot of takeaways from this as well as a council and also as individuals. We got to learn more about block grants, but also just specifically how one asset of the city works, and about the allocation of funding and different resources, which was great insight for us as a council. We're coming from a range of districts, and so it was impactful for all of us. But for those District 9 students who got to participate and work, that was benefiting their own community, was really impactful as well. And afterwards, students said that they felt more encouraged to engage with the city, to reach out to their stakeholders. So we definitely are going to continue doing work like this and advocating for ourselves and our peers.
So next step for supporting Student Voice, of course, this initiative was a really cool thing to be a part of. I know personally, I found this to be deeply informative and really productive. But to further this work and to really make Student Voice a priority within City Council, we came up with a few things to consider. First, I think interacting with District 9 students to get a better sense of ways to improve food, mental and physical health, and housing services, the four issues we found to be most pertinent through our survey. If we interact with these students to get a better sense of how to improve these things, I think that's how we really began improving District 9 as a district. In addition to that, I really, this, because I like this so much, I would really want to make student feedback a prerequisite for certain fund allocation initiatives, whether it's with Community Development Block Grants or with something else. Another more general idea that I would like to speak to is to uplift youth voices and convert engagement to action. Of course, we always love being on the table and as we are right now. But we would also like to, just as we did here, convert this engagement to action and measurable legislation or any other measurable impact on our communities. And of course, though we can't vote, we always want to make our community a better place, and we provide unique perspectives as the generation for tomorrow. In addition to that, with the Students and Governments Council of Pittsburgh Public Schools specifically, we would, of course, love to have your help with connecting us to state representatives, providing key resources and supports, and any other things that we would feel would be necessary. So with that, we conclude our presentation. Are there any questions?
Questions. First, we're joined by Councilwoman Erica Strasberger, Councilman Kalkil, Councilman Bobby Wilson. And so the young people just presented their sort of strategy of how they came up with their distribution of my, my, my CDBG distribution. And they, I gave it to them to decide what groups they reviewed, did a survey. I'm just capsulating. I'm not sure if you saw in the back. They did a survey, a rather extensive survey, and targeted the District 9 residents and found out their priorities, and then justified their allocations given on their priorities. Actually, a spectacular job that I was very impressed by, right? Very impressed by. I thank OMB for having this idea and bringing the young people involved. So I'm going to ask, we'll go down to last slide with Mr. Wilson, any questions you want to have of our, of our high school presenters, or the process, or OMB, or any of this stuff?
Oh yeah, here comes the questions. Just want to lighten the mood a little bit. So you had an opportunity to work with OMB, David. And did you go over like the whole, like how many CBG dollars we get in and why these allocations are? Okay, yeah, because that's all fascinating to me. I mean, especially previous to this, you know, working with, being on a community group and being a recipient of those, of the Spring Hill Civic League, it was definitely, you know, interesting just to see how, you know, this all works prior to being in office. And then once in office, it's the funds, so what do we call these funds? These are Public Service Grants. Yeah, and then, but how much CBG dollars do we get total?
Yeah, each year for the, for the city, we get around 14 million.
14 million. Is there like a certain percentage of like service?
There's a cap, yeah, of 15%.
15%. Do we get up, we get up to that, right?
Pretty close, yeah.
And so you all, it looks great. I'm extremely impressed with everything. How much funds were you working with?
I believe $110,000 total.
So you combined two years, though we did here, okay. Yeah, I'd just like to hear, like, what was the greatest challenge of trying to decide? I mean, I have my own experience, but what's the greatest challenge of, I know you try to be non-biased, but, you know, with everything in life, it always becomes like a, you know, how are you really going to judge one group over the next?
Yeah, I mean, I think, at least for me and other council members might have different answers, but it was really interesting trying to sort of figure out how you make, you know, decisions that aren't just sort of in line with your own personal beliefs about certain things. So like, you know, if there's some issue that you're really passionate about, but that, you know, the residents of District 9 have, you know, not really highlighted as an issue, you sort of have to take a step back and understand that your job here is to make decisions that are sound, you know, on the feedback and on the advice of the people who are going to, you know, receive these funds and who are going to be helped by it. And so sort of taking my own, you know, personal beliefs out of it a little bit was something that, you know, you sort of have to wrestle with a little bit, because there were definitely projects that I saw that I totally would have loved to, you know, give $10,000, $20,000 to, but that it just wouldn't have made sense to based off of, you know, the survey data that we had and all the other information that we had, you know, sort of saying, this just isn't an issue in District 9, even if it might be in other places.
Yeah, I was really overwhelmed. I remember when we were, when we first like got the rubrics, and I wasn't really sure how to go about, you know, going through 10 different proposals. And all of the organizations seemed really great, and like, they were, we were giving money to like places that needed it. But I think what was helpful was that, well, first of all, we were working with the city and people who, you know, knew what they were doing, but also that we had like sort of a mathematical way to do it. And we weren't just like randomly, you know, $5,000 here, $5,000 here, but we got like data from students and also other residents in District 9. And also, we had a rubric that the city made, and that made it a lot easier.
Yeah, I think something else that also helped counteract that challenge is that we're a council, so we're able to also work with each other on things. So I definitely agree with what Dylan was saying, that there were some organizations where I was like, oh, I've worked with them before, or this is so interesting, but it just wasn't really what District 9 was looking for. And so doing my own rubric and then reviewing with Ada, and we looked at it together, just to make sure, like, I wasn't being biased at all here, right? And just comparing our scores, that's also really helpful, not just to work with the city, but also to be able to work with each other too, to help make those decisions.
Did you have an opportunity to have a conversation with some of the potential recipients?
Not at the one-on-one level, but we were able to, you know, read their applications and do sort of our own private research. I know I sort of, you know, looked up a number of the organizations just to see like, is this, you know, someone who can, you know, write a really great proposal, but is like, is this organization actually doing work? Where is the money actually going to go beyond just, you know, where are they saying it's going to go? And so, you know, sort of verifying it on that end gave sort of a more personalized look on each of the organizations, but we weren't able to have, you know, direct one-on-one contact with them.
So how the service grants are set up, as you, as you know, like based on the census, did you, like what's your, how do you feel about, you know, there being a whole vetting process of would they qualify? You know, a lot of times, what we struggle with is the population that we serve, does that population actually qualify for the type of funding? Did you get an opportunity to like, by the way, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just trying to engage, I'm not like trying to drill you or anything. I'm just, I just think it's a great experience that you guys all went through. And, you know, it's something that I did when I was, I think I was in maybe ninth grade, eighth, ninth grade. I went to Sarah Heinz's Boys and Girls Club, and there was a, there was a, there was a group that they formed, was called Lead Team, kind of, kind of corny name, huh? Lead Team. But it was made up of, you know, mostly high school kids, and we had roughly the same amount of money. It was a, it was a, this was going back in the 90s, but we roughly had a similar amount of funds to distribute throughout the neighborhood, and we would get in applications and we, but it wasn't CBG money, it was just like grant, like it was a larger organization that, you know, gave the Boys and Girls Club the money. So anyway, getting back to this, I was just curious on, you know, your whole thought on the process of how we do the census, and then we have these funds to distribute, people have to qualify for that. The biggest challenge that I see is the actual spending of the funds. So, you know, once, once they're allocated, did you have any, did you incorporate that? I understand it was the rubric was given by you, like was that, what do you think of that? Was it a large component of it on who, like previous ability to spend the dollars? Was that a factor at all?
Well, definitely that went into it. So we had a lot of narrowing down stages of the survey, narrowed down the recipients based on what students wanted. The rubric definitely narrowed down. There was a category for that, like, were they active in the past? Have they done the same kind of work? That was also very helpful.
Oh, great. Well, hey, thanks for, thanks for, thanks for getting this going. I'm definitely interested, maybe it's something, you know, to incorporate in my, my district. If so, is this the, the group at PPS to, to reach out to?
Or your people, we're here.
You're like our bond. I can see you 20, 20 years from now is going to be the, the bond. What's the client we hired? Did they ever see the bonds? I like that answer. All right.
Yeah, we also have like a bunch of like local government officials and state government officials that come speak to us. If you want to come speak to us, we'd love to have you and talk.
Great. Always a pleasure having PPS at the table. So thanks.
You very much, Mr. Kalkil.
Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. First, want to say I'm here to support your efforts. I love seeing young people like yourselves engaged. This reminds me very much of the council I sit at every Tuesday and Wednesday here, except a little less bickering and you're better dressed. So credit to you for both of those things. Ellis grad, my daughter went to Ellis, so, you know, I'm very familiar with the, with the school, and, you know, it's a great school. But I guess, so we're talking about $110,000, okay? And I know Reverend Burgess, you know, worked with you in order for you to allocate that, which is a large responsibility. And, you know, and you, we had talked earlier about, you know, how do you take in count where you might have your own idea or think that money should be funded to something, but that happens to myself and other members at this table all the time, where there's allocations that come in front of us for, you know, say some project in District 9 where you're working, where in my district it's like, oh, well, it's, we don't really have that issue, you know? So I struggle with that all the time. And you're right, you know, you really have to take in whole, I take the city as a whole, and, you know, just because it's not a problem in my district, I still support it because it's important to the city of Pittsburgh as a whole. So it sounds like you really did your, your due diligence on that. What was the number one, and I saw the allocations, but I couldn't remember exactly what they were. What did you feel coming out of District 9, the, the feedback that you had gotten was the number one issue that people want to engage on?
Well, so, oh, you can go ahead.
I don't know if the allocations, you know, kind of reflected that or not, but I'm assuming they did, you know, but so, so if you could just speak to, you know, as to what you felt the top one, two, or three reasons were for, you know, requiring or asking for allocations.
I can split the difference here, since this was my slide. So the top-
I hope he's not in my district.
Four things that the students identified from the survey were health services, mental health services, the banks and pantries. So I think like four out of the five of our final results, four out of six, five out of six, one of them might not have been, but they definitely all, almost all represented those.
Councilman Wilson and I are working very closely on mental illnesses as we speak. And, you know, I think that is a, you know, when we talk about homeless, when we talk about, you know, people displaced, it's, it's really important subject. So, any of you aspiring politicians?
Maybe, maybe a little bit, maybe a little bit. Yeah, I just, I don't know. I've, you know, seeing politics in action, both through this council and through other organizations, I just think it's one of the most, you know, significant ways of making broad change in your community. Like, you know, obviously, the work of individuals, you know, people like doctors, is tremendously important, but being able to sort of say, we have the power to sort of help those people do their jobs as well as possible, and really make the city a better place is something that's really appealing to me in terms of, you know, making the city a better place and making, you know, the country a better place as we sort of move on into the future.
Very noble of you, I will tell you. And that's why I'm in it, I will tell you. So, you know, it really is. I mean, that's, that's the type of people we need in government, people who want to make a difference. Typically not in it for the paycheck by any means, but it's for, you know, helping our city grow or whoever you're representing, whether it be state, city, or local government. So I just wanted to stop and say hi. Go ahead, Ada, did you have something to say? Got to time in.
Um, what I was going to say is that also, since the, I think Isaiah said the number one, like, category from the survey was mental health. And I think especially for people like our age, like, and I know, at least for me, I've had one normal year of high school. So I think that mental health is definitely a big factor for a lot of young people. And I know I've seen it at my school, and I'm sure everyone else has seen it. And I think that it, like, we're going through like a national youth mental health crisis right now. So I think that, like, it's really cool that we get to do even something like really small for just these students in District 9 to hopefully help them, you know, with the effects of the pandemic.
Ellis in District 9? Oh, okay, I think that's yours. Okay, okay. Okay, unless you have something to add. I just really wanted to support your efforts. I really respect what you're doing. You all made a very good presentation through and through, and, you know, you kind of made a support you. And it sounds like most of your issues that you're tackling are ones that we deal with every day here. So they're kind of, you know, on the same line. Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much. Erica.
Thank you. Well, first of all, it's a pleasure to be here with you. I'm sorry for missing your presentation, but the good news is it was recorded. So I will, I can and I will go back and watch it because I'm, now, all these questions have piqued my interest, and I'm interested to understand the rubric and then who you ultimately chose. I also want to commend Reverend Burgess and OMB, Dave, and everyone for, for this idea of taking this particular pot of money. I know that you've gone through this exercise in the past, or some of you have. Or some of you have at least and participated in the Youth Budget Council, but this is a really creative way to, to, to have some geographical boundaries and focus around it. So thank you for your work on this. It's, it's really, it's really, it's just a creative way to, you know, really put some, some thought behind the, you know, the small amount of power that we have to allocate funds, which is aside from the city budget, not much when it comes to kind of direct funding for services. I guess my question for you is based on what I've heard so far is, do you think that this type of thing is scalable so that it could be used for other council offices with other groups of people? So in this case, it was, it was you all. And thank you for offering your services and to know that you're here, but you're, you're not always going to be here, right? So there are going to be others who hopefully take an interest in this and want to, you know, participate from all parts of Pittsburgh. Do you think this is scalable to a point where we could have, you know, as many council offices as wanted to engage in this way?
Yeah, I think absolutely. I think, you know, doing this work at, at sort of the, the level specific to District Nine has been really helpful to like sort of understanding how we scale it. Like I think, you know, this is sort of my, my idealistic future is one where, you know, youth voice being directly involved and, and not just sort of being, you know, an element, but actually really, you know, being able to make these decisions, um, you know, for, for young people in our communities is sort of, I think, the, the platonic ideal. And I think the question is how we get there. And I think doing work like this is something that is a really great way of doing it. You know, we were able to see that, you know, this worked really well in District Nine. We were able to, you know, get everyone up to speed on CDPG money and how that worked. And, you know, go through all the proposals and rank all the proposals and make our final decisions in the span of a little more than a month, I think. And that was for one council district. And keep in mind, a lot of that is information that's applicable everywhere. So, you know, what a CDPG is, you know, how that money is used, how we normally allocate that money, all of that's going to be applicable to every council district. And so when it comes to scaling, it's really just reading more proposals. And that's something that, you know, I think our council members and, and other youth from across the city of Pittsburgh would have no problem doing if the trade-off is we get to have our voices heard directly in government.
All right, other comments or ideas?
Um, yeah, definitely. I agree with that. I think what I really appreciate about this process was that it was reliant a lot on data and, and also analysis of that data. And that is of course always scalable because we can always have a survey to be sent out to students or any other community members, and it could just be in a larger scale. Further, we could also, of course, reviewing, we would just need to review more proposals as Dylan mentioned. So it's certainly scalable and I think it's something definitely that the city could work on with any other fund allocation initiatives, because of course the community knows what the community needs the most.
Dave, you want to talk about that?
Yeah, I'd say first of all, the students were, were to breakneck speed during a very complicated time in your lives and you're applying to college and trying to work through other things with the pandemic, just like adults are. They did an incredible job with the survey. They got about 3% of the target demographic for District Nine High School students, which is amazing for anything government. I can promise you that's a high watermark in a lot of ways. So I think that there are opportunities to scale even at the school level. So if we wanted to do something that was a little bit more of a direct participatory budgeting model, we could do that with some of the electronic tools we now have available. Balancing Act is a tool we currently use. They have a new tool on the market that could be more of a just participatory budgeting. So instead of doing a survey to narrow things down, they could actually choose between the proposals that were submitted. I would say we'd want to just market the front end of the survey, I'm sorry, the front end of the proposal process to the nonprofits, help them understand how the process is going to work. So they could provide information to us that would be relevant to which council district your services are going to be in. We asked those questions already, but in some cases, it's not always the focus, whereas in a, in a much more scaled version, we'd have to know. They'd have to be able to tell us so that we could, we could file it correctly and make sure that the right audience was seeing it. But absolutely, I think there's tools available. And I think we, we as city officials gained so much information working with the high schools, right? I always think of Councilmember Rudy Ak and the eighth grade reading level and making government accessible to people. Well, this was amazing test lab to have that in, in real time. We also had some huge wins as this, as the survey was out with different schools, you can kind of see spikes in the numbers from when somebody had a great conversation with a school leader or when somebody went basically person to person to other students to let them know about it. So we were able to kind of capture some of those wins and spread them around over the whole city on a much longer timeline. I think we'd see even more robust participation.
It's just, it's so great on so many levels. I mean, what's great for, what's good for youth is going to be good for the population at large. So I think also having that as sort of a focus is really interesting, empowering, but also like, there are, there are layers of benefit to that. And then I just think about the system of CDPG and how it's federal funding that comes, eventually comes to us as council members to decide how to allocate. And like a lot of things that are, you know, with good intention that from the federal government are really messy and kind of unorganized when it comes to the, the local level because there's some direction, but the direction is a little bit, it hamstrings us, but also there's a lot of leeway and the leeway leaves it a little bit messy. And so as just one example, you know, if we don't have data and numbers that we're working off of, it's really just council members using their own best judgment as to how much to spend on each individual organization. And it's different for every single council district. So if you're the nonprofit and you think, well, we offer services to five of the nine council districts, I'm going to apply to those five. You have no idea how any one council member is going to make their decision. You're just kind of guessing like, well, if I meet with all of them and I send all of them a letter, like hopefully I'll get some money and you just have no idea how much you're actually going to get from each council office. And so, and from the mayor's office as well. So it just makes a lot of sense to me having, having the system scaled up and more organized and having a little more of that data on the front end so we can, I think as council offices to understand we're giving this amount to this organization, knowing what other offices are also giving to that organization. So it can be a little bit more coordinated. So so many different possibilities here.
So Dave, I want to thank you for your work. When we first began this conversation, I sort of trusted you and I think it has happened spectacularly. So much so that if, if we have the capacity, I will continue to do this. I have two more left, years left of my term, which is the same amount of money of more or less. And so I'll commit that money to this process so that I want you to know that your work will go on beyond you, that you have done this sufficient enough that I will at least continue to see it myself, if not other council people. Because our, our goal from the very beginning, we probably tell you this, but our goal was to show what was possible. And then we think that maybe the mayor or other council people would participate on some level themselves. Because it's one thing to say that young people are our future and are important. It's another thing to make them part of the present and empower them to actually do what we do in this, in, in small parts. You know, we manage $500 million a year, council does in the operating budget, more in the capital budget and even more, we talk about authorities. Our last thing is I will share with you. I ran for council, I came from the church and from academia to be a council member, just for what you said. I wanted to make an impact. And so, you know, if, for those of you go to Obama, you walk down East Liberty Boulevard, you'll see new houses. Well, I helped lead that effort. So I can sometimes, and my niece lives in them, so I can drive past and say, well, I did something, right? And, you know, for the, you, in Ellis Bakery Square, I was involved heavily in that development and that planning. So you get to really see your work in concrete and say, oh, I had, I had a small part of this. And it's, it's rewarding. But I thank you for coming and taking time out of your studies to be with us this afternoon. Again, we are, we are your partners, you know, and, and Dave and your teachers. I will talk to your, your teachers and your mentors in a minute after this is over, but we're here to always help you. And, you know, so you just have to tell me how I can be most helpful to help in this process. I want to thank the members for, for coming. Any final comments from anyone?
I just hope you all consider either running for office or a career for a city, state or federal government because just because you, you might not want to run for office doesn't mean you couldn't make yourself an incredibly valuable part of making the city or the state or, or federal government run, which is all very important and exciting things to do in many different ways. So.
So if there is no other comments, I
No, I just wanted to say, looking at this council, be damned if this is not a young quarry. You sir are much more handsome than that, Mr. Coghill, though. Thank you all for being here. You can have fun too, you know, it's all about.
God bless you. If there is no other comments, again, thank you. God bless you. And, um, some of them, those of you who have already made your college choices since we're here, tell them where you're going to school at.
I see. I didn't realize I'd have an opportunity to brag about myself. I'm going to be going to Georgetown and I'm so excited in the fall next year.
I'm taking a gap year in Israel and then I'm going to Yale.
I'll be going to the Wharton School at the University of Pennsylvania.
You know, we're, yeah, we have really brave children. So God bless you. I would smile upon you and we will, we will, we continue this conversation. And so I'll take a motion to dismiss the meeting.
Second.
On favor, say aye. Or is this name, we're dismissed.